He called me once at home and said, I got all these numbers about number twenty eight breaking. And that's it. So he sent back something and I didn't ask him. Then he called out. I really wasn't there. Wasn't like I had no reason to call before. I really wasn't there. So he sent back something and I didn't ask him. Then he called out. I really wasn't there.
Okay, folks, five thirty.
John, I'll celebrate it still?
Or sleep. He was pretty tired after my day with him yesterday. Okay, so I called to order the Bella Vista City Council Special Budget Work Session. My thanks to Wanda for sitting in for Wayne. He was unable to attend. Thank you. And we have one item, which is the 2023 budget. Kim is going to lead the discussion in a minute. Councilmember Burke wants to just quickly go over his handout.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I've shared this before. I thought I'd share it one more time as I get ready to ride off into the sunset here. This, I think, is good news, and I think it's constructive to look at kind of the broader multi-year trend in revenue with our three, with just three of our key sources of revenue. You can see how they've grown, each one of them. It's county sales tax, city sales tax, property tax. You can see how they've grown, and the number that's in green there is the aggregate of all three of them. And so you can see we've gone from ten million dollars in these revenues in 2017 to 2021 is our last full year. We're up to fourteen point four million. It looks like, I wrote in there, 2022, it looks like if I extrapolate out what the last two months might look like, we'll add another million dollars to this revenue in the current year, which we all know is kind of a year of concern from the standpoint of inflation and potentially entering into a recession. So I think this is good news for the city of Bella Vista. It shows a strong trend in revenues, including city sales tax. That's the orange one. If you see it starting out in 2017 at one point nine one million dollars. Here we are, just four years later, we're at three point three million dollars. So you see the growth in our city sales tax. I think that's strong. I think it's healthy. It can always be better. We're never going to have more money than we know what to do with. We're never going to, we're always going to be in evaluation of what can we afford to do this year. And I just wanted to share this one last time because I think it's good news for the city of Bella Vista, and it shows that we're in a pretty strong position just from the standpoint of trending. Living in Benton County is a blessing to us. Benton County is going to continue to grow even if we do enter a recession. So I think the future bodes well. I think this is kind of trend analysis that might be useful as we enter into the budget and budget planning process for next year.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Relative to the Benton County portion, which I think is the what, the blue line?
Yes.
Our share that we are getting now under the new census data
Has gone down.
Has gone down by very much.
From eleven point nine eight to ten point five nine.
About a twelve percent drop, I think, in what we're getting. And I've watched those month by month, if you look at them. We've seen, that started when? When did we get our
Winning to effect September thirtieth of last year, so basically December was our first year of the lesser amount.
Right, so we've seen the full year now.
We're about to be the full year.
We've seen ten months of it.
Yes.
And I think it bodes well. I was concerned, too, that we might see a flattening of that. But I think we continue to see the county sales tax number performing very well, and I expect it to continue to do so.
It is. Mr. Stone?
We've averaged five hundred homes a year for how many years now?
Oh, maybe two for five hundred.
Just the last couple.
Yeah, just the last couple. It started in 2013 and '35, and I think it peaked at six hundred and something last year. And it's a little bit behind now this year.
So we're always, we're always a year behind on the property tax?
Yes, that's right.
Well, property taxes are a year behind, but it takes two years from permit
That's right.
To revenue.
So would that be the explanation then for the, for the lack of increase in the property tax?
Well, the property tax, the way it's calculated, yes, in part. But the way it's calculated, it's not as big, it's not a big number, as you can see.
Component for our overall income is a small portion relatively.
Jerry, I was concerned about that also. I would have expected greater growth in our property tax just for the fact that we're building all these homes. And I did look into that some, spoke to the people down at the property tax office. Man, you talk about seeing sausage being made. It is not pretty.
It's not pretty.
One of the ways they keep track of knowing when a construction is completed, there's no, there's no connection, I think, into like occupancy permit or anything like that. They figure it out by driving around. And I was blown away by that. I thought, how many people do you have to have driving around to figure out, when is this house complete?
Yeah. And there's been so much, not only here, but elsewhere.
Yes.
Well, you did a study one time, or the numbers that what property tax would actually increase, and it's not that great.
No.
No, it's not that, that great per home. It's not. But also keep in mind that although the property tax revaluations were done in '21, they were not effective, and the new rates were not effective until '22. So this number here, when you look at our budget, you'll notice that the '22 budget was higher than this and showed, showed a pretty significant increase.
Well, you know, property taxes, you know what, I hate to quote a number, but on my house, for the property taxes I pay, it sounds ridiculous. This is, I think, high, like two hundred of it goes to the city, and that's it.
That's right.
It's really small. So
The school district collects probably ten percent, oh, excuse me, ten times as much as the city does.
Right.
Fifty something.
People be shocked to know just how small a percentage of that goes to, and then only a small personal portion of that goes to the general fund.
We get point zero zero five five.
Of total property tax.
The rule of thumb is if it's, if it's a brand new home, take twenty percent of the purchase price. The assessor tells me that's roughly what the, you know, the assessment will end up being. And then you multiply it by the point zero six, whatever it is, which includes the school tax. And buried in that is our five five, which is four for operations and maintenance and one and a half for lofty. And it doesn't amount to very much.
And, you know, there is some concern that that, as a state, you know, Arkansas's property tax structure is not conducive to supporting cities. So it's, you know, it's so heavy on depending on sales tax in order to support cities, and our property tax is so, is so low as a percentage. It's a statewide, a statewide issue. I was at a conference, Doug and I were at a conference, and they were talking about that Arkansas's structure makes it difficult to support your operations on property tax.
Yeah, you just couldn't do it. Okay, are there any other questions?
Well, having said all that, the property tax and the city's sales tax are about three point four million.
Yep.
Except for, except for the county sales taxes, it's as much money as we get from anything.
Yeah, the county's the biggest contributor. Okay.
Can I ask you, and this is a curious question more than anything, I'll let it go. The new Walmart Home Office there that's being built, right?
Yes.
So all the materials that go into that
Yes.
Are, are taxed, right?
Yes.
So there's, there's, I guess the city gets a portion, but then the county does as well, right?
County would also
Which some of that comes to us. As long as they're building that thing.
There are sales tax, I don't know if Walmart saw it or not, but there are sales tax breaks you can get for
That's true. Maybe they're not that much associated with it. But I'm just saying, you know, as long as that thing's being built, the revenues come in. I don't know if they got tax breaks. I don't know how it works, but
Yeah, they probably did.
But the city and the county both would have had.
Tuck time to the back end of some bill or another.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, this is a really good segue into, thank you. It's a really good segue into what we're talking about. So if you want to open your packages and look at page two, let's just, you know, quickly look at the revenues because that's what we're talking about here, right? And, you know, this is, this is a high level, of course, but you're going to see budget to budget, you're going to see a sixteen percent increase on revenues, okay? And that's budget to budget. That's the key thing here. This is not looking at actuals. This is looking at budget to budget. And what I've done, you're going to see in a second, what I've done is, on the next page, we'll talk about this, but what I've done is raised the sales tax estimate. All right? We'll talk about that in a second. You can also see that, that total operating expenditures, we're requesting a ten percent increase.
I'm not sure which version we're walking off. Yeah, I know you sent one just
Oh, no, that was just, the one I sent you was just the fund balance and capital expenditures.
Okay.
This is still the same, the same budget
Very good.
That I had previously sent.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions about that?
To the city website and pick up the mail.
I didn't bring that one because you said it's going to change.
Not, not from the one I, I sent last time.
Are you online?
No.
No, I know this backwards.
As I said, the one that you handed out, see, at the last
Right. The one that got, came from Wayne is new from the one that I handed out last time.
Which is the one that's in his package?
Yes. We're looking at the one in the package that Wayne sent.
Okay, all right. That one I can't get access to, so.
Yeah, we can share this.
That should be the one that he just gave you.
My computer's malfunctioning too. Can't get it.
I hate when that happens.
I do, too.
Technology's a beautiful thing when it works.
See this, do it.
Okay. So, all right, so we'll get back to the revenues here in a second, but I wanted to show you that our expense increase is only ten percent, which, you know, is a standard number that's running around right now that we hear a lot about. It's, you know, so that includes raises and the healthcare benefits that you guys previously approved. All right? Street revenues are going to remain flat according to AML.
There's no increase in the turnback.
Yes, right. And then street expenditures are going to decrease because Mike had a big, a big hit last year that we're not expecting this year. So, all right, so if you want to turn to page, the next page, page, what is that, page? Three. Okay, so let's just quickly go over, if you want to take your page, let's see, this is page five. We're going to talk about page five, but I'm going over the notes on page three and four. Okay? So this is to Steve's, Steve's point, to go back to that, is that you're going to see in this that I raised the estimate for the budget very significantly this year because we were concerned last year that we were going to have a pretty dramatic hit from that decrease in the percentage. And there was a lot of grumblings about a possible decrease in sales last year, especially this, for '22. Let me just say, for '22. What I've done here is I've kept the revenue approximately what we are expecting through the end of this year.
As an actual.
That's, that's my, going to be my base for next year. And I believe that estimate is pretty conservative. And it does not include the seven point five percent that Benton County is using to increase their revenue. Okay? When I was talking to them, you know, we have over a fifteen point five percent increase of year over year, you know, as Steve mentioned. So they're predicting a seven point five percent increase in their revenue. But I, I wanted to keep it. I wanted a conservative revenue number here.
Yeah, it is, because, and I know we don't have twenty, a total twenty twenty-two yet, but I just looked at twenty twenty-one. It was eight point one three for the county, and you have eight million for twenty twenty-three revenue, for county sales tax?
Yes.
And then the city's sales tax in twenty twenty-one was three point three one. You've got three point four. So that's two years advanced, right, in twenty twenty-three? But your estimate for twenty twenty-three is equal to, basically equal to twenty twenty-one?
No.
Don't forget the county had that percent change, though.
So what, what my estimate is, is it is almost exactly equal, it's rounded, but it's almost equal to what we will get in twenty twenty-two. Does that?
Yeah, I hear you. I, I just, yeah, I just thought it would have been higher.
So it sounds like the county's pretty bullish then, aren't they?
Well, her point is, her point is that we, and we live in a very charmed area of the country, and that they expect, you know, she said seven point five percent, and she, they expect to see more than that because of all the people moving to northwest Arkansas. And I don't, I don't disagree with that, but, you know, let's be clear, there are a number of people out there saying that we're going to take a pretty big recession in twenty-three, right? And I didn't want to set up false expectations.
We don't know where that's going to go, the inflation factor and how it will affect this in the downtown.
Exactly, exactly.
I think that's an unknown.
So we're just very conservative.
And in the further that, in the event that we were, you know, hit with a recession and this number becomes unattainable, then, then we, we have our reserves that we've discussed repeatedly. And when we get to the fund balance and capital request, you're going to see that we also have the ability to delay some projects. We can finance projects. We, we have, we can have opportunities to save cash in the future. You know, because one of our, our goals as a city has to be to maintain the level of service that we currently provide our citizens.
No layoffs, no furloughs.
I'm sorry?
No layoffs, no furloughs.
Right.
Same level of service to our constituents.
Yes. All right, so I think, I think the next page is pretty straightforward. You know, this is just, I, I increased, the only thing that's really kind of a pretty big number here is the franchise fees I increased by three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for Carroll Electric because we're expecting a six percent increase in rates.
In twenty-three.
Yes, in twenty-three.
We got that number from Carroll.
And does that equate to a six percent increase in our
It should. Any questions about any of that? All right, so that, any questions about anything else on, on page five? Okay, then page six is just showing you that street turnback fees are, are flat. Okay, so now let's go ahead and talk about
One more thing on revenue before we move on off that. I'm trying to remember how we account for impact fees.
Not revenue.
Not revenue, no.
No.
No. Because it's a liability.
Liability on your balance.
So we track it every month, but we don't run it through, so thank you for that question. Because what, what we decided to do is we record it as a liability every month, and it's building as a liability. At year end, it'll go, it'll go through my, our income, but it'll go straight to restricted. Right?
It's a restricted fund anyway, as it comes in.
Right. And so what I didn't want you, what I didn't want to do is muck up operations. Okay?
No. I was thinking of more in capital, when we get into capital problems.
Absolutely.
That's a source of funding for capital problems.
You're absolutely right.
For new stuff.
Yes. And that's what we say, we have, this allows us to be very flexible, right?
Lots of options.
Yes, we have options.
Question?
Yes, sir.
At one of the decrease in planning permit fees, that pretty significant decrease in planning permit fees?
Because we are probably not going to make budget in current year for planning and permit fees. So I went ahead and decreased those. As a matter of fact, I didn't even print that, that support page off because it's only a seven thousand dollar decrease, but it doesn't look like we're going to make the number. For, now, keep in mind, that's not, that's not CDS's new house permits and all of that. This is related to the
These are planning, planning department
Planning, not, yes, it's planning, not building inspection fees. And if you remember, we had the discussion Doug, chime in anytime you feel free. We, we had the discussion that I'm sorry.
Variance fee, we got a planning commission processing fee, all that kind of stuff. So those are pretty normal numbers.
Why are they, why are they decreasing? Why are you not planning on?
Well, for one, when we, when we were here a couple of months ago, I remember that we made some changes so that we won't have as many exceptions and we won't have as many fees.
You're talking about the variances?
Yes.
So, and that's a special fee, I'm assuming. Is that not correct? Filing for a variance
Two hundred dollars.
Is a separate fee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And solid waste pickup fees also.
But that's not that number, though. That's not a part of those two.
No, I'm just asking about the
Right. So let me just close the loop on the permit fees. That's seven thousand dollars. We're not going to make, I, I don't think we're going to make our budget from last year on that. And then based on the fact that I thought we had agreed that we were going to have decreases in the amount of fees, I went ahead and decreased that a little bit. And now, and so now your question was on solid waste. So yes, there is a decrease in the solid waste. If, Peter, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to you, but didn't we talk about that in a council meeting where we talked about what the, the new solid waste cost was going to be?
Yes, so let me just refresh your memory. The amount that Republic was looking for was a sixteen percent increase.
Right.
And I did not want to do that. We got it down to nine, I believe, and that was still too high. And so built into the solid waste or the trash fees is an amount of money that they pay back to us, which goes to streets.
Right.
And so what we did was we lowered that amount of money that's going to come back to us so that we could keep the increase to the residents at a more reasonable level. And I think it went up ninety cents a month or something. And that was done on purpose because I, I just didn't feel that we should be charging that kind of money when we have this extra money available and our taxes are doing so well, so.
So in essence, what you're saying, Mayor Christie, is that the city absorbs some of that increase in the solid waste part of our operation?
That's correct.
Rather than passing it on to our customer.
Right.
I just say, I think on the revenue, and I, and I do not have an issue. I'm not debating it. I'm really not. I think we're paying it really conservative, and I'm fine with that. I mean, even just year-to-date this year, and I know this recession conversation's going on, I, you know, I don't know where I am on that. Who knows, right? It could, could not happen. But the numbers that were projected last year, city sales tax was two point nine seven five. We're at three, three point oh eight two right now, and the county was projected at sixty-three eighty-two, and we're at seven right now. And we still have three months to go. So we're blowing those numbers away.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying
That's why I increased it by sixteen percent.
Yeah, so I'm comfortable with it being flat. I'm just saying, you know.
No, no, let's be clear. What I did, what, what I did is I increased it, the budget, year over year, but I kept it approximately flat. It, it's going to be within my estimate, I believe, you know, and I can, I you know, I'm pretty confident that I could raise it another ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars, but, you know, above that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get nervous, right?
I'm not debating. That's fine. I'm just saying, I think we're in good shape.
I did an analysis, I did an analysis. Hold on, I've got it right here. I brought it with me. So I did a I went backwards and said, okay, so based on everything, you know, where are we? Year over year, between the two, we're gonna our percent change was fifteen percent between twenty-one and twenty-two, okay? So what I did was I said, all right, I took all the numbers that we have, year-to-date actuals, and I, I added our budget to that. Our, and I said, okay, that's my new number. So it'll be, it'll be slightly less than what we actually received this year.
Or in your actuals.
Yes, slightly less. But I think that, I think we're in a good place, and I think we can, we can make that number, and I don't, I don't think that we, I don't think a recession would keep us below that number, right?
That's really what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I really want to
Avoid us seeing a big deficit in what your projections are, or a big reduction.
In revenue, I would rather, I would rather us be over budget. Now, I don't like being over budget as much as we've been, which is why I, I went through to, you know, you made a good point, and I went through and I raised it this year. I, I, I went for, I went for the gold. But what I don't want to do is set false expectations.
County went for the platinum?
We're good. We're good. Like, we're good.
Okay. All right, so now we're talking about, we're talking about expenditures on page eight. So the notes are on page seven, and the expenditures are on page eight. This is really straightforward. A significant portion of our increases were because we have the new public safety complex coming onboard next year, and we, we had to raise some of the budget because we don't know exactly what our costs were going to be there, so we had to make some some, thank you, exactly. And we also had, you know, some increases in staffing and equipment related to those increases in staffing. Again, I mentioned this earlier, but the budget includes the benefits that you guys reviewed. Okay? Anything about that on page eight? Anything about that on page eight?
Nope.
Page 8.1 was a request, I think it might have been Larry who asked for this, but I can't swear to it, but I thought it was an excellent idea because I think of it this way, and that is excluding salaries and benefits, what were my operating increases? So, this kind of gives you an idea, if I exclude benefits, where, where did I see my increases?
Or decreases.
Are decreases, yes. So, are there any, any questions about that?
I assume some of those came from the department heads as well, in terms of where those numbers?
Yes, so, from nine to the end of your presentation, those are the independent depart, individual department budgets, and they're there for your review. If you want to ask questions now, you can, or you can email me a question if, if you want to dive into that later. But, does anybody have any questions about the individual department budgets at this point?
Question on process, really, more so. So, each department has a department head.
Correct.
They probably do some coordination with their team, and they turn in, here's our, here's what we'd like to see for, for next year.
Yes.
What's the scrubbing process, if any, that, that you entertain, Mayor Christie?
Yeah, in August of every year, what we do, Kim, myself, and the same thing with Carrie, is we sit down and we draw up a, a complete budget calendar, which includes this meeting as well. And, we have milestones. And we have a milestone that says, okay, department heads, you have to have your first blush into Kim on such and such a day. Once that comes in, and she and I sit down and we do a scrub. And, then we go back to the individual department heads, and we say, either you're fine, or you've got to sharpen your pencil. That goes through another cycle, it comes back again to Kim and myself, and we look at it. Usually don't have to do too much of a scrub after that, the department heads have been very, very good in keeping their budgets in check. And, then we do one more circle, just to make sure everybody's comfortable, and then we put the budget together. And that includes both the capital as well as the operating expenses.
Do you start off and kind of try to give your sense to the department heads of what you think in terms of payroll, which is a big part of the.
Yes.
Largest part of the expense, to say, hey, next year, I think you want to plan for, on average, X percentage, 7%, 8%? I see a lot of variability in the payroll expense increases. Some of it is rationalized by adding headcount, but not all of it is. There is some variability there. Does that account for promotions and things like that?
So, in past years, what we've done is always had a set increase. This year, however, all cities, including ourselves, went out and had the Johansson Group do a very, very deep dive on the salaries for every single position. Then the department heads were asked to go and look at every single employee and to ensure that their compensation is correct to their level of experience and time on job. And that's what you're seeing, is that correction. We've been doing a little bit each year and trying to zero in, say, on dispatch, that was one of the first ones that we hit a few years ago. Kept improving that. Now, this time, we have taken the Johansson study, and we've said, okay, it's time to move, let's get it all laid out. And that means that you'll see a difference in the percentages between the departments, because some were already there. Fire has been there for years. They're probably the best. And then we had to get especially Mike's crew up to snuff. And so you'll see that variability, and that's what it's from.
Okay.
So, so Fire is more comparable to sister cities in Northwest Arkansas in pay?
They were more comparable to the Johansson study. It's difficult to say all the sister cities, because one of our sister cities decided that they were going to start an ambulance service. And, they basically went on a poaching trip, and they were hiring anybody at midpoint, even if he only had two weeks' experience. And, so they took about 10 of ours, chief?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and they took some from other cities as well. And, that's, I think, rather rash to start people off at a midpoint, because within a few years, say five years, they'll be maxed out. Then what do you do? And, ultimately, they could leave, because there are other cities that actually have a broader range in a step program. So, unfortunately, that's, that, that's happened.
That situation though failed on them, though, didn't it?
No, I think, I think they have it in place now, don't they?
Well, one of, one of the ones that Jerry was talking about did fail.
Yes, they did fail.
And the other one is kind of rocky.
Okay.
All those people they hired, they had to let it go.
When you're describing a budget process by department, and it's very usual, what you said about, hey, you've got to sharpen your pencil, do you ever have a situation where you say, hey, you actually maybe ought to be spending more than you are?
Yes, not this year, but in some past years, yes. Particularly on the police side, before Chief Graves came onboard, I can remember with Chief Farmer having a discussion. He had lowballed some of his training, and I felt that we needed more training. And so we had to up it. Yes, it's happened, but not very often.
So, page eight is the, that's the original, the original budget request, right?
Well, page eight includes salary and benefits.
That's just.
Page 8.1 does not include salary and benefits.
No wages and benefits.
It's just operational expenses.
So, Kim, the total expenditures in 19.6, how does that, and that's total expenditures, how is that compared to 2022 actual?
I know. I'm sorry, are you, are you talking about expenditures, because it's 18.6? Do I have a typo?
Oh, I, well.
Are you looking at revenue?
Yeah, I was counting the million transfers to the streets.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, you're right, it's 18.6.
Okay.
I was wondering how that compares to this year's actual, because this year's not quite done, but you can probably tell where it's going on.
You know what I, because, because of all the expenses we get in, well, we, we get in a huge amount of expenses after year-end.
Oh, yeah.
So, between, we don't, you know, I, I think I've had this discussion with a couple of people, but we don't close '22 until February, the end of February, because it just goes on.
You have 13 pay-throughs for your payables.
That's probably.
Well, actually, I think it's 14, but it's coming. But, the point being is that, so, so I hesitate to compare to the current year actuals because it's, it's a big swing, the last, you know, the last two, the last month is just a crazy month from expenditure-wise.
And we do have the department heads beating the bushes, trying to get the vendors to get them in. And, it's like herding cats.
Yeah.
Could we, I'm just, it's just a question, and we don't, everybody may want to do this differently. Because the operations, operations expenses, expenses are separated out on a separate page, which I appreciate that. I think that is an interesting view, right? But, it's really the payroll expense I'd like to hear a little bit about, department by department, you know, because it does vary a little bit. Does it include headcount? How much did you, did you try to increase payroll proportionally across the board per department? Or some lagging, some were a little ahead? Because you, payroll is a big deal this year, right? Because we're losing people to other cities.
So, we went person by person.
Okay.
Through the whole study. So, that's why it's so variable, because we didn't use a flat rate. What was the first part of your question again, sir?
There was a 6% cost of living adjustment.
Yes.
In general, right? Plus, on top of that, there was, several departments had, you know what, did, did that not print off?
What's that?
Well, I think, I think.
Oh, yes, if you look at like.
Everybody who.
Yes, like, look at page 12. Look at page 12.
They got 6%, but not everybody got the 6%.
In general, it'll.
12 says information technology.
Yes, so, at the very bottom there, I've given you some, I've given you a piece of information where I say, you know, headcount increased, one network administrator.
Yeah.
And then if you go look at the police on page 15, you say, headcount increased six.
Okay.
Three officers, one record clerk, one dispatcher, one part-time custodian.
And then we have two in Mike's operation that are seasonal, and we're moving them from seasonal to full-time. Over at the library, you have one that you're moving to full-time, or two? I'm trying to remember what's on my board.
Yeah, no, I, she didn't move anybody to full-time.
Okay, because I have, I have an entry on my board for you.
Well, if it's a part-time, then there will be additional requests.
Oh, that's right, yes, I'm sorry, it's not you, it's the court, right.
Yes, court, court did increase. And I believe that's on there, that's on there. Is that, is that helpful?
Yes.
Doug, is that what you were looking for?
Well, okay, yeah, I see.
Or did you want more than that?
I can see the larger increases, you know, where headcount's been added, right?
Right.
Right.
So, where there are not, where there were, where there was not headcount added, it looks like it's in the range of, I don't know, I'm just throwing them out there, except for one department, what, 13? Anyway, double-digit percent increase in most departments, but you felt we needed to play some catch-up?
Yes, we did.
So, that's kind of where we are, is somewhere a little bit of a double-digit increase, department by, by department. If you would take the headcount out of those other departments, then it would probably be about the same increase. Does that make sense?
True, yes, that makes sense.
Okay.
Where are you seeing the headcount increase?
There, it's at the bottom.
Bottom of the line, right down there, if it has one.
If it has one.
If it has one.
So, like, look at, look at page 14. That's the one that he was just talking about, the court having a new one.
It's below the line. That one does.
There it does, there you go.
When does the budget assume that the payroll increases would be in effect?
Well, some of them are January 1st, IT is March 31st as a lead.
Oh, that's, that's for the new heads.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Not, not headcount, but when would city staff recognize their payroll?
January 1st.
Or January 1st.
Yes, sir?
Question for you under streets, you show headcount increased two dash one, operator one, so does that mean there's three there?
No, it's two people, there's only one rear one.
Yes.
That's what their title is.
Yeah, the class is operator one.
I should have put O-N-E.
Oh, the class is operator one?
Yeah.
It's not just one operator?
So, and I was going to ask about streets. I know we lost some drivers because they got their certification right, whatever that is. As soon as they got it. And moved, did we, I guess, address that and improve our situation there?
If you approve this budget, we are.
Okay.
Yeah, but, and you're right, that has been a common affliction for us. You know, so they come here, and we spend all the money, and they get their CDL, then they move on.
Okay.
But, yes, this budget corrects that wage.
Okay, great.
So, we need to indenture them for two years?
Actually, you know, we laugh, but we did bounce that around a bit, you're right.
Well, you know, and some, some companies say, if you, if you leave within two years, you got to pay back, you know, so.
Okay, we decided not to go that route.
Anybody have any additional questions about what you're looking at? Those are good questions.
Okay, let's go to capital then, Kim.
Oh, I know, you guys are really excited about this. This is a.
This is a new one?
A new one.
It's not the one that was in the packet?
Not the one in the packet.
This is, this is dry yet on this one.
Yeah?
The ink is just barely dry.
Thank you.
Jerry? Question here on the, if we didn't talk, we didn't say anything about debt service on the fire truck, did we?
That's a to-be-determined.
To-be-determined.
Does anybody want any others, because I have extra copies? I have. Here, you win. Okay, this is, the only thing I'm going to point out here, just to make sure you guys, we talked about in the last meeting, we talked about this assigned funds donations. So, you can see where I've decreased our capital available by the amount of the assigned funds. It's line, it says 2022 assigned donation, and that's the 144.
Is that on the first page?
Yes, page one. Do you see that?
Oh, here we go.
Oh, okay.
Funds donation?
2022, 2022, assigned all.
Yes, all departments.
Yeah, okay.
We, you guys approved that, you know, that's based on the 21 audit. We went and said, this is the amount of that that was donations, and so I've reserved, I've reserved that amount of money out of the.
That's donation with a stutter.
Yeah, two, two N's.
Yeah, two N's.
Did I spell it wrong?
That's all right.
Oops!
We're gonna let you slide.
Thank you, you know what, I guarantee you, nobody hires me for my spelling.
Hopefully, your addition is better.
Yeah, hopefully. All right, so, I think these are straightforward, you can see that we, we have some items that are carrying over that did not get done. So, the reason they're included on here is because you guys approved them last year, and they're not going to be completed in '22, okay? That's what those are.
Those are the dollars we carried over?
Yes, it says carry over.
Yeah, but these are the dollars that we're carrying forward.
Yes. Otherwise, I think this is, you know, this is pretty straightforward, you, you have the different pages here. If you guys want to take a minute and, and look through, look through any of these pages, or?
What were the key changes in this last-minute document?
Oh, in the last-minute document?
Were they minor adjustments or?
Well, I, I updated the word, the date, I forgot to update the date up there at the left.
Okay.
That's one.
All right.
Two was, I tied the current year revenue estimate to our budget. I had it slightly higher because we thought we were going to have more revenue, which basically meant that the amount available would be reduced. But, you know, so I, I tied it to our final budget. Hopefully, this will be our final.
Well, you were just saying, now it kind of peruses and look at it. I'm just curious, because, you know, we, we replace cars like every year, right? How many total police cars do we have?
A lot.
Yeah, I know, it's kind of, seems like we replace four or five every year, so I was just curious.
You must have about 50?
Yeah. We carry some extra spare cars to the city, like when folks, sometimes you folks will borrow them to go to Little Rock and stuff, and we provide some additional cars, but we, we run them now at about 110,000 miles is our key. It used to 100,000, the mayor and I talked about it a few years back to try to get a little more life out of them. We can do about 110,000 if we can. And it routinely replaces, we replace about five or six cars a year.
It's okay, I was just curious how many we had, I didn't, I don't know, I was.
You know, I, I don't know off the top of my head, we probably have close to 40, 45.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, how many vehicles do you have, citywide?
A thousand bucks a piece to insure.
It's more than that, probably. Well, I counted vehicles and equipment on our list, I mean, it's well over 200. When I say equipment, equipment like the street department's got bulldozers, skidners, you know, that type.
You've got mowers and things like that.
Yeah, so altogether, it's about 200.
So, you know, we have already talked about this a little bit previously, but what, what we've done with this presentation is we've, we've said basically, we're going to pay cash for everything, okay? And, so this would, the, the idea being that this is our, our exposure. And so this would, the, the idea being that this is our, our exposure if we pay cash for everything. But, you know, as we discussed earlier, depending on how sales revenue comes in and, and we have our impact fees, so depending on those two things, we can make determinations about how we actually want to finance these, okay? There's been some talk about financing the fire truck that's coming in, in March or April.
So that's the one point five three that you see here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, one point five, one three.
So if you look at.
Not all of it though.
That's all.
The new fire truck is one point three if you look at the schedule here.
Yeah, so if you look at page two, that's the fire department.
And the new truck is one point three nine.
Yes, and.
So we could do half and fund the other half, we could fund the whole thing? Because in the past, you remember, we purchased pumpers, which are, are less expensive.
This is a ladder truck.
But there's nothing stopping us from using an amendment seventy-eight loan, which is a five-year loan at a lower interest because the banks don't have to pay tax on the interest. So it's an incentive for them. During these past years where the interest rates have been super low, the banks weren't really keen on doing amendment seventy-eight, and we didn't have any new ones anyway, we paid them all off. But now with rates coming back up again, it might be attractive to do that. So that's an alternative. Another alternative is, for example, fire department capital other on the main sheet for three, three million. That's the first phase of fire station number one. So if you remember, once the police leave, then the plan is to gut that building and put it back together again, so that it's the living quarters on the, on the lower floor and the administration on the second, is still the plan.
The, like, day-use area, things like that, on the second floor.
Yeah.
Kitchen.
So, again, we don't have to pay cash for that. And we can fund that too. Or, in the case of some of the others, we can defer.
You're saying fund that to remodel?
That's the remodel.
You're saying fund it, I mean, refinance, or finance it rather than?
We could.
We could, yeah. So if we have a recession and we determine, okay, here's the payroll, because we already know what the payroll is going to be for next year, and we don't have, and we don't want to have any layoffs or, or furlongs, we will still get some tax dollars coming in, but there may be a decrease in those tax dollars. If we need to make them up, then we can make them up through the capital side of the house by changing and not paying cash for it.
Adjusting how we, how we pay for it.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, do you know what the interest rates would be?
Not, I, I checked about two months ago and it was about three and a half percent. You know, so I would imagine since the changes, the changes in rates, I would imagine it'd be somewhere around four, you know? And depending on, do we have one more, one more Fed meeting this year?
Yes, on the thirteenth.
So depending on what they do there, you know, it might be four and a half. So, you know, we'll just, we'll have to look at that, and we'll know more as our tax revenue starts coming in, right? And, and for instance, if you look at, we have new land, we have land here for fire station five and fire station six. We can use impact fees for that, right? We could do amendment seventy-eight loans. Is that right, amendment seventy-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Loans for those, I mean, there, there are a number of things that we could, we could do here to give us some flexibility to, if we're, if we do experience a worst, a worst-case But on the other hand, right now, it looks like if everything goes according to plan, we would have cash to do it, to do all these things.
I apologize, so I'm looking at this first page again, right? So if we, if we paid cash, you have to direct me to this, the unassigned funds available after capital request would be one point, one point oh nine five million.
Yes.
Is what we would have left.
That's right.
In the bank. After our twenty-five percent that we have to hold.
Correct. So we're, we're in a good place.
You know, the other thing you can do too, is because we've never really said what drives us to go into that twenty-five percent, it could be a recession. And we go in there to help with the wages and, and continue to pay as much cash as we can to get things done and also perhaps conserve some more, so that we're not paying the higher interest rates and we keep the short-term debt down.
Right.
The good news is, while I'm talking about this, is Raymond James came in and saw Kim and myself two days ago.
Two days ago.
And they brought in a new financing structure on the bond, and if the tax income stays flat, we'll have it paid out by twenty-eight.
I believe it's twenty-eight.
And if we get a modest increase, I can't remember what she said it was going to be.
No, if it continued at the current rate of fifteen percent.
Yes.
Then we would, we would see it about two years earlier.
Earlier.
Wow, that is really.
So when we first took the bond out, it was out to twenty forty-five.
Yeah.
And about a year ago, it dropped to twenty thirty-one, because I knew going in that we were two times ahead of, of the payments.
Yeah, right.
And that's why Standard and Poor gave us such a good rating, and we got such a very good interest rate of one point one percent.
It does tie back to where we began the conversation too. Our revenues are increasing, that serves the bond very well as well.
Yeah.
We're, we're sitting, you know, I, I feel like we're sitting in, in a strong position. And there are some, there are some factors that are contributing to that that are, are going to be there for a while, I think. I think the growth of Benton County, that stuff, property taxes are going to continue to go up without increasing the tax rate. But don't forget, the American Rescue Plan factors into this as well. There's another big payment coming that's not recognized yet in this unassigned fund balance we begin with.
That's right.
And I, I know you've tried to explain this to me before, and I'm, I'm thick, it takes two or three times sometimes, but you started with an unassigned fund balance at twelve thirty-one twenty-one.
That's right.
And that balance has grown over the course of this year.
Well, we'll, we'll drop about five million dollars over budget total. It's my expectation for, for twenty-two.
Say it again, you, we will drop?
What I mean is that our bottom line drop into fund balance.
Yes.
Will be about five, is my expectation. You know, based on a, a review, I, I did it fast.
Right.
Just, you know, like, three weeks ago, and it looked like we'll be around five million dollars.
Well, thank you for doing it, because I think it does inform this process. We're working with a really old number here at the end of twenty twenty-one, and there's good news that goes along with it.
Right.
When you say five million dollars, is that just from our, that's not factoring American Rescue?
No, it includes American Rescue.
Okay, all right. So we're going to get three from that?
Yes.
And maybe a couple from?
That's what, that's my minimum number. I, I.
Nice.
I like to be conservative about that.
But there's five million dollars available for future capital projects that you're not recognizing.
However, let's just take a moment and let me just comment on that a little further. We do have a lot of capital requests coming in in the next four years after this one.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so.
More, I understand.
So let's, you know, out of this twenty twenty-three budget, we're not going to drop much money into our.
Maybe not, it depends what actuals are.
Well, that's true, but based on the budget, we won't be dropping a lot of money into our unreserved fund balance.
But based on last year's budget, we wouldn't have dropped much into it this year, but here we are.
Yes.
As long as we're still conservative. That's why it's all, it's always good to be conservative, because there's always good news on the back end.
Right, but again, to your point, it's American Rescue money. You know, five million of the money in our unreserved fund balance, five, approximately five million dollars of that is American Rescue money. So, so the point I'm making here is, is we have money available to do a lot of these projects, but we have to be, we, we have to be thoughtful.
Absolutely.
Because we cannot expect that windfall to continue.
Absolutely.
So, and, and if you're asking me, I would tell you that I would seriously consider financing that fire truck. I would seriously consider financing the remodel city hall, because we're not going to continue to drive our fund balance forward.
See the growth that we've seen.
This is just me, right? Because our revenues, so, so one of the things that we're going to struggle with is operating budgets, okay? Because we don't have a big commercial tax base here, we don't have, as you pointed out earlier, the amount of property tax is not growing the way we would like to see it grow, right? So going forward, there is going to be a concern of can we meet our operating budget out of current revenue?
Wow, okay.
Do you see my point?
Yeah, but don't be all doom and gloom.
You know what, it's my job to be doom and gloom.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is.
Let me go back to.
To be cautious, yes.
Yeah.
Understood.
Let me go back to that beginning number of eleven million. It's old, yes, but it's done for a purpose because it's a substantiated number out of the audit.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's an audited number.
That's correct, it's not a, let's just pull a number out of the air.
Right.
That's why you have to have it, because you've got to have a stake in the ground and say, that's where we started from.
Yes.
And it's been, it's been audited and proven.
Right.
And that's a good basis to go from.
Yes.
Where we are.
So if you borrow the money, right, which that's what I'd be in the camp of doing, you know, we all know some really smart people, right? And then a couple I know are really smart, and they're always like in the camp of use somebody else's money.
Yep.
And keep yours, invest it, now, they may be a little more aggressive, but we could probably return pretty close to the same percentage with using that money, investing it, as what we're paying on the interest to use somebody else's money. You know, I'm just saying, that, that's where I would, that's, that's the camp I would be in.
Well, we did just get some good numbers from, you know, we have an investment committee meeting next week probably, and we did get some really interesting numbers.
Percentage?
For, for returns. So, so to your point, if we could be within one percent, I would, I would absolutely agree with you.
O C K has been offering three percent on a, on a six-month C D in the short term.
Yeah, well, the rates we just got were significantly better than that.
I, I'm not surprised, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I, yes, that's, that's a lovely thing.
You know, the five million that we just put in treasury bills in three-month tranches of a million apiece, I think it came back that next year we'll make a hundred and eighty thousand on the interest.
Out of five.
Out of five million.
Versus, versus we've made maybe, maybe twenty thousand dollars in the last three years on, on that five million dollars.
I apologize.
Oh, yes.
I mentioned a few today, I had a previous engagement flight for the last five months tonight at seven thirty, so I, I hate to bug her out on you, but I think we're pretty close anyway.
Is there any?
Thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you, let me know if you have any additional questions.
Doesn't mean anything, but I think in my first year on the council, I think our total budget is eleven million.
Yeah, when I first came on board, it was around thirteen, fourteen, so it's grown a lot.
Oh.
A lot.
Any other questions that I can help you guys with?
We started out with only a handful of employees too.
So have a look at it again, if you have any questions, either come in and seek him or, or just call her or send her an email, and she'll be more than happy to give you any breakdowns or anything you want.
Ask Steve, you may get, you may get one.
Jerry, you keep that.
I've got the one to give us originally.
Good, no, that's yours to keep.
He can get another one, I bet.
I can probably use that. Okay, that was the only thing we've got on the agenda. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Do you want me to put your sign and frame it and send it back to you, or can I just toss it?
I know, I'd like them back, yeah.
So when you run, so when you run in four years, you'll have another one?
Thinking of another run.
Well, it's not close to the house, just go look for it.
Speaking of that.
Department heads, thank you for all you two for being here this evening, I appreciate it.
Doug, you're going to be in tomorrow in the morning? Okay, I'm going to try to settle you down on what I think I want to do, because, well, I'm looking at it, I'm pretty much on your side, because I know what's going to go and what's not. It's just a matter of throwing a carrot and stick out there kind of thing to give them something.